... directly into them, so our television audience especially can hear. Also, I want to mention that we're going to be moving items 5.1, agenda items 5.1, to 5.4 after the public hearing to allow our guests to get back on the road. And I also want to mention that this weekend is the Cemetery Walk for the Historical Society. I know if you go out there, you're going to see a couple council members participating, one playing a gravedigger. I won't mention who that is, but he's got kind of a scruffy beard here tonight and play the role. Also, this time, I'd like to turn it over to Crystal Hegy from the Fine Arts Commission for her award pro- awards.
Hi, my name is Crystal Hegy, and I am the Chair of the Fine Arts Commission. The Fine Arts Commission would like to thank the mayor, council, and city staff for the support of arts and culture and making it a pillar of the city's vibrant identity. I would also like to thank the Fine Arts Commission itself, and if I could have members of the Fine Arts Commission please stand. Thank you very much for your work. Winona is fortunate to have so many individuals working to keep arts and culture integrated into our everyday lives. Art is not only an economic engine for our city, but brings meaningful experiences to our residents as well as our visitors. Today, we are honoring Harry Michelle, Dee and George Seppo, and Hugh and Vera Miller for their contributions to the arts in and around Winona. I'll start off with Dr. Harry Michelle's career as a teacher and conductor has combined the goals of music education with the high principles of professional performance. As Director of Choral Activities at Winona State University, Dr. Michelle has distinguished himself with a following that has enjoyed his annual Messiah singings, Renaissance madrigal banquets, and desert theater productions. Within the community, Dr. Michelle has served as artistic director and conductor of the Winona Oratorial Chorus and is the music director for the musical theater productions of home and community options. During his career, he has also served as choir director at many churches specializing in preparing choral orchestral works. Celebrated for his energetic personality and creative programming, Dr. Michelle is widely known as a specialist in choral rehearsal techniques and has served as the Southeast Minnesota Choral Representatives on the American Choral Directors Association Board of Directors. During a 45-year teaching career, he has taught and conducted choirs at all levels. While choirs have toured Western Europe and have sung at MNC conventions, Dr. Michelle has drawn acclaim as conductor, teacher, and choral clinician. Congratulations, Dr. Michelle.
Now, if you all rise, please, and we'll sing. This is a wonderful honor. I appreciate all of you very much for giving this to me. The music and all the fine arts are extremely important, as you all know, in our community, and we all are very fortunate that we have a committee here that supports music as much as you do. Directing the Oratorio Chorus has been a tremendous joy for me because it has given me the opportunity to share music with singers of all ages. We've had students from high school and the college course and adults, adult adults. And it's been an amazing, amazing adventure for all of us, and I'm very, very fortunate to have experienced this. And I really must say, and I hope you don't mind, but I would really like to share this award with my wife, Lauren, because without Lauren, I could not do any of this. Lauren's in the back. Thank you, Lauren.
Our next word, award will go to Hugh, Miller, and Vera Miller. Hugh is President and CEO of RTP Company, recognized as a world leader in specialty compounding. In addition to his work with RTP, he was currently a board member of Winona Health, HBC, Minnesota Beethoven Festival, and the Maury Miller Athletic Foundation. Hugh and Vera have been longtime supporters of the Minnesota Beethoven Festival. Since 2007, the festival has celebrated the music and legacy of Ludwig von Beethoven in an unequalled environment of performance, discovery, and community nestled in the quaint bluffs of Southeast Minnesota. Masters like Yo-Yo Ma, Joshua Bell, and the Minnesota Orchestra Hall have paid homage to Beethoven in his premier festival, which transforms Winona into a classical music mecca each summer. Congratulations, Hugh and Vera.
Thank the mayor and the city council, the Fine Arts Commission. We certainly appreciate it. It's a great, great honor. Also, just great to be part of this wonderful community, which does so much with the fine arts and so much else. Thanks again. Appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
And our third award will go to Dee and George Seppo. Avid art supporters and patrons, Dee and George champion many of Winona's important arts organizations, including the Great River Shakespeare Festival, the Frozen River Film Festival, the Minnesota Marine Art Museum, Theater Do Mississippi, and River Arts Alliance. George was active with the Winona Area JCs in the late '60s and early '70s, chairman of state JC convention held in Winona at St. Mary's College, chairman of 25th Anniversary Winona Steamboat Days, and chaired several JC-sponsored entertainment performances at the former middle school theater, bringing many fine artists to Winona, including Tammy Winnett, Roger Miller, and George Jones. He has been a chamber ambassador since 1974. Dee married George Seppo on July 23, 1966, and they lived the majority of their married lives in Winona. Dee passed away suddenly this July and is missed by all who worked with her and loved her. Congratulations to Dee and George.
Hello, Mayor and Council. I'm Lee Gundershumer, Arts and Culture Coordinator. George just called me. He got trained. So, he is on his way and just about to park. So, that is not a political statement. That's just what happened. So, on behalf of George and Dee, he thanks the Commission and the city very much.
Thank you.
Thank you to all our recipients tonight. It's all very well deserved, and thank you for all you do for our community. City Manager?
Yes, the council asks that staff take a look at the 20-hour parking rule and hopefully bring something forward at the next meeting. So, if any council members have any input, please feel free to get in touch with me or to the police chief prior to next week. We appreciate your input.
All right, thank you. Roll call?
Mayor Peterson.
Here.
Councilman Thurlie.
Here.
Craig.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Scholmeyer.
Here.
Under the required public hearings, item 2.1 is the Public Hearing on the Tax Increment Financing for District Number Four at 102 Walnut Street.
I'll declare the public hearing open and ask Ducey to come up and say what she wants to say.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of council. So, this is a public hearing this evening, and anyone wishing to speak can come forward and give their comments. Before council this evening is the creation of the Tax Increment Financing District. There's many steps in this process, and this is one of the steps. Future steps include the port considering a development agreement that outlines more details, and that would come back to council on October 16. So, along with the TIF plan describing how the proposed 102 Walnut TIF would be used is a resolution, and that resolution would approve the TIF district. So, the 102 Walnut Building sustained a fire approximately two years ago. It housed Intec Printing and prior to that, WNC Printing. There was a fire. The elevator shaft was destroyed, and Latch Development is proposing to redevelop 34,000 square feet. This can be challenging. There's historic improvements, and the building is blighted, and they have requested assistance in the form of TIF. And before you tonight is that resolution.
Okay, thank you. And I'll ask if there's anybody here that wishes to speak to this issue? I thought I did. No, you did. So, the public hearing is open, and state your name and address.
My name is Peter Shortridge, 2450 Garvin Heights, Winona, Minnesota, is my residence. I'm the managing partner for Latch Development, and so we've made this request to the council as far as TIF. In this case, a portion of this TIF is going directly to us to help with the general project. In our particular case, in addition, there's about another 20%, 30% that is going into public improvements. And in the document, you see there, the public improvements relate to utilities going underground, the alley being redone, sidewalks, handicap ramps, things outside of the footprint of the property itself. So, this is one of those truly somewhat of a blighted situation. We think we have a good project, but there's a lot of hoops we're trying to jump through to make it successful as a mixed-use project, and there are some real limitations on the site. But we do feel that we're going to be able to have this ripple effect through our TIF and through the city council and port using that to apply some of those funds from our TIF to public improvements and utilities that are going to really have a positive impact on the whole block and especially the alley and the infrastructure on the inside of our block. So, for us, we feel it's our investment, but at the same time, we feel we are going to have another, we're going to have a good ripple effect as that development, you know, has that effect on the block. So, I think this is an excellent use of TIF, and I would go, if you have any questions or need, I guess you could answer those at the public hearing.
Any questions for Peter? I guess none.
Simple, then.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak to this issue? Is anybody else here that wants to speak to this? Last chance, anybody else want to speak? I guess not. Declare the public hearing closed and open it up for council discussion.
I make a motion to approve the resolution. I would second that.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Discussion, will we vote? George?
That motion is to establish Tax Increment Financing District Number Four, correct?
Yes.
Well, I think it's a great project personally, and I think if you do as good a job as you did with the Latch property, it's going to be just a huge asset to our downtown. Any other comments or questions? If not, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes.
Item 2.2 is the Public Hearing on the Tax Increment Financing District Number Five for 956 Mankato Avenue.
Mayor and members of council, this is a proposed TIF district called a Renewal and Renovation District, a 15-year district, and the purpose of it is to fix the blighted conditions on the site. In addition to that, there are poor soils at the site that have increased the project costs. The proposed development includes rehabilitating Perkins, and in addition to that, developing a 96-room Fairfield by Marriott at the site. And the developers here as well for this project, if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. I'll declare the public hearing open and ask if there's anybody that wishes to speak.
My name is Mike Rivers, 84 St. Oaks, and I'm a developer. A little history on that site, if you, people that have been here longer than I have, the Holiday Inn was built there in the late '50s, remodeled it many times, added on to, added a wing in the '70s, and then they put the roof on for the Holiday Dome probably in the late '70s. And that ran well until probably 2000, 2010, it became pretty much rundown. It was closed, I think, in 2012 or '13. The bank got it, and then went up for bids a couple years after that, and we bought it about three years ago and ran into some problems with the soils. We tore the building down and ran into problems also with the asbestos. The asbestos cost us $265,000 to get it out, and that was a lot more than we had thought. The soils were worse. I developed the Riverport Inn, which is across the street from this one, and the soils there were soft, but they were black dirt, and we were able to run, put a surcharge on that. But these soils here have been removed and put back in, and they're very soft underneath. So, we've really had trouble figuring out a way to take, to take care of the soils, except for taking it out 14 feet deep and replacing it with sand. So, we're still working on that. The Marriott people have wanted to come to Winona for a number of years. Lee, the guy that I dealt with on obtaining the franchise, said, as soon as I told him which was, what the site was, he said, "We don't even have to stop in Winona. We know that's the site we've wanted for years." We've turned down three people already for the Marriott in town, but this site here will be. So, Danny and I went out to Marriott, and we're qualified to own it and manage it, subject to us getting a license for the city. Any questions?
Other questions? George?
Mike, is there going to be a restaurant in this Marriott?
No, there wouldn't be. There'd be just a free breakfast, and then there'd be a small conference room. They don't, in this particular Fairfield, one that they have, in the larger Marriott's, of course, they have big convention centers, but this one here is a Fairfield, and they don't allow that.
Here's the show.
Would Perkins still be there, though?
Yes, they will.
Okay.
And just to make it clear, we're not remodeling or asking to remodel Perkins. We're mounting the backside of that where the Holiday, or the Quality Inn was attached to the Perkins building. The bathrooms, as you know, are a long ways away from where they eat, and we plan on trying to get new restrooms put in for them and redo the backside, the north side of it.
Did you have a question?
I did, but you answered. I was going to ask the same one, the council person.
Other questions? Well, I think it's a great project, and I know Winona needs the room, so thank you for doing this.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Anybody else wish to speak to this issue? Last chance. Declare the public hearing closed and open it up for council discussion.
I'd make a motion to establish the Tax Increment Financing District Five and enlarge the boundaries of the Revend Development District.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any last discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Now, we'll move to New Business, item 5.1, which is the 2018 City Health Insurance Committee Recommendations on Health Plan Designs and Rates.
Mayor and council, this is our annual recommendation for the city health insurance for 2018, and we have with us this evening a representative from the firm of Mercer that will give us just the highlights of the city's health insurance committee's recommendation. I'd like to introduce Joe Harton with Mercer.
Okay, Joe.
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks, Mayor. Mayor and council, as we discussed in the pre-council session this evening, the insurance committee's been hard at work this year. We've been working through a bit of an increase in claims experience for the 2017 plan year, borne out by a couple of things, both the creation of the new Purple Plan, which was highly successful with employees, even more so than we initially anticipated, and then an increase in claims, both large claims but more broadly across the group as a whole. So, through the work of the insurance committee and several meetings throughout the spring and summer, we've come up with several recommendations that are in your packet, one of which would be to renew with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Minnesota for the administration and stop-loss coverage and network services of the plan. Also, to make a series of plan changes, which the insurance committee vetted, discussed, and agreed upon, increasing the overall rates by 16.8% and maintaining individual stop-loss or protection for the city for large claims at the level of $110,000 per person. This would result in an increase in costs to the plan, to the tune of about $300,000 to $400,000, and the insurance committee addressed that, wrestled with that, and came through with these plan changes that we discussed in the pre-council meeting.
Okay, thank you.
I'd make a motion to approve the city health insurance committee's recommendations for 2018.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any further discussion? As you said, we did talk about this at some length pre-council. So, we'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.2 is the Health Insurance Program Funding.
Your honor and council, I'm recommending that the city contribute additional $64,000 for 2018 towards the cost of the program, and that those dollars are currently in the budget. That was approved.
I would move to approve that.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Michelle?
So, just to clarify, when we approved our budget, that was already planned in?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep.
Thanks.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.3 is the 2018 Employee Life Insurance, Long-Term Disability, Employee Assistance Program, Flexible Spending and Health Reimbursement Account Administration.
I would move to approve the city's life insurance, long-term disability, short-term disability, Employees Assistance Program, and flexible spending and health reimbursement account.
Second.
Motion by George and seconded by Michelle. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
And item 5.4 is the 2018 Dental Insurance Coverage and Rates.
I'd make a motion to approve the city's dental insurance.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
And now, we will return to the petitions, requests, and communications. Item 3.1, reappointments to the Planning Commission of Dale Vetcher, Todd Paddock, and Peter Shortridge.
I'd move to approve those appointments. Second then.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.2, reappointments to the Citizens Environmental Quality Committee of Frances Gooden and Daniel Hall.
Move to approve those appointments. Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.3, reappointment to the Merit Board of Elizabeth Burrow.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.4, appointments to the Heritage Preservation Commission of Connie Dretzke and Carl Sandquist.
I'd move to approve those appointments. Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.5, a request for an on-sale wine and malt liquor license for the Blooming Grounds Express at 270 West Third Street.
I'd move to approve the license.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.6 is a request for an on-sale malt liquor license for the Pizza Hut at 1630 Service Drive.
Move to approve their license. Second then.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Carries.
Item 3.7 is a request for a 30-minute parking zone on West Third Street by Riverland Auctions.
Move to introduce the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion? Al?
Yeah, I guess I'd be curious as to why they're asking for two 30-minute parking zones.
Do we know?
When they called me, they have several times a month where they do viewings of their items before it goes online, and they say they get backup between that and when the people are delivering and dropping off their items. So, there's multiple, multiple people there at a time.
How many times a month is this?
I think they do it two times a month.
I'd like to have, I mean, I'll support the motion, but I'd like to see in practicality if we're hurting ourselves by not having the, at least one of those spots available for longer-term parking, just in terms of the traffic level down there. It's not an amendment, it's just a suggestion.
Anything else? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.8 is a request for no parking zone to be added on East Mark Street by Badger Foundry.
Move to approve the attached ordinance.
Second.
Motion by George, seconded by Michelle. Any discussion?
Will there be any, ORC, ORC was okay with this?
ORC was definitely contacted, and they said they do not need those spots.
Their lot is frequently full.
And Badger has offered their lot for Daniel Hall. Strictly a truck.
Anything else? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.9 is a license agreement request from Wes's Boys LLC for encroachment in Rightofway on Market Street at 117 Market Street for Market Street Tap.
I'd make a motion to direct administration to execute the attached license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 310, license agreement request from H&R Rock Property Partners for encroachment in the Rightofway on Market Street or the Gabby's Bar at 179 East Third Street.
I'd make a motion to direct administration to execute the attached license agreement.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
And item 3.11 is the premise permit for lawful gambling for the Goodview Winona Hockey Association to be used at Tavern 129, located at 129 West Third Street.
And make a motion to approve the following resolution. Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
And on to item 5.5, under New Business, the purchase of new police squads. The lowest bidder was from Sugarloaf Ford with a bid of $65,199.16 for two squads.
Make a motion to accept the above bids from Sugarloaf Ford.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry. Any discussion?
When will these two squads be on the road?
Chief?
Probably into 2018. Once we order them, it takes several months for them to come, and then to get them outfitted sometime late winter, spring.
Are they going to be all black like our latest new one?
Black and white.
Oh, black and white, okay. That one that's all black is a nice one. I'd never rode in it, but it's a nice one.
It's been behind you a lot.
That seat's not comfortable.
Got a question there.
Yes.
Are these going to be Ford Explorers, I assume?
They're the Ford police package.
Package.
Yeah, all-wheel-drives.
There's been an issue with the ventilation system. Has Ford addressed that, and will that be addressed in these new vehicles? Has Ford addressed that, and will that be addressed in these new vehicles?
They are now. I don't know if, I'm assuming it'll be taken care of in this model, but in our, in our years that were affected by that, they put detectors in for now until remedied.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point six is the final plat for the Daniels first subdivision.
I'd make a motion to concur with the Commission's recommendation for the attached resolution to be introduced.
Second, Beth.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item five point seven is a grant application for an accelerated innovation deployment demonstration program for Broadway Street.
I'd make a motion to apply for the grant.
I'd second that.
Motion by Paul and seconded by Pam to apply for the grant. Open it up for discussion. I will add one thing. I was presented with a petition signed by a hundred and forty-one current online residents, mostly residents, in favor of the project, so just pointing that out. Jerry?
This has been discussed off and on over the last, over probably a year and a half or so or more, and I was originally very much against it. But I guess, you know, old folks can change their mind from time to time. But it's not a complete one-eighty, I got to tell you that. I'm going to vote in favor of this, but rather reluctantly so. I'm not really in favor of this because I want to turn Broadway into a bike, bike street. If it happens, there will be room for bikes, but that is not the reason I'm going to go for this. I think it's going to cost us more. We've, you know, anytime there's free money, grant money, there's usually strings or there's increased costs. The reason I'm voting for this is because the increased safety numbers are something I just cannot argue with, and this is my neighborhood, these are my constituents, so anything that is going to increase the safety on that portion of the road, I'm going to vote in favor of.
Paul?
Actually, I agree with Jerry. Being an avid cyclist, I bike to most of our council meetings during the cycling season. My primary reason is for safety and for access from one side of Broadway to the other. We're making a lot of improvements to our downtown area. We're encouraging people to, to come and shop and to participate in the entertainment venues, and I want it, I want it to be safe for those pedestrians to cross. We have a younger, more active community. They're, they're purchasing some of our, our housing stock in the center of the city. They want to participate in those events that are in downtown and down by the levee. Also, there's quite a bit of support, as I think you can see here in the gallery, not to mention the letters of support from the WSU Senate faculty, from Livwell Winona, and from Winona County Active Living Committee. I think there's a fair amount of support for this. I encourage our city engineer to go for every grant dollar they can to pay down the remaining portion, and for the community to understand that when we want a higher quality of life, sometimes it comes at the, some additional expense.
Well, I'd like to jump in too. I, I support this. I've long supported making Broadway safer. I think that, well, I travel this section of road four to six times a day. I see it way too often on safe conditions where somebody's trying to cross the street, and it's just, it's just not safe. And I'm fully in favor of doing whatever we can to make the street safer. I think that the bicycle lanes are secondary. I think the federal funding is a bonus, and I think it'd be great to take advantage of it, but it's not about the funding, and it's not so much about the bicycling, it's about making the street safer for the residents, especially the people, you know, crossing to get into the downtown, especially our students. I know there's a lot of personal responsibility out there with, you know, getting your face out of your phone and paying attention and looking both ways when you cross the street. It's almost like we have a generation growing up that weren't taught to look both ways, but to me, that's beside the point. I think this is a proven way to make the street safer, and I'm all in favor of doing that, and I'm excited about it, so I'm going to vote in favor of it.
Al?
Everybody is for safety. There's, there's no getting around, I mean, why not be supportive of safety? It's just a matter of, I think, degree. And what we have done in the past as a city with the additional crossing, pedestrian crossing, flashing lights, whatever their technical name is, and the, the other improvements we've made in that area, we've, have improved safety. My response to this probably has been a lot of constituents that have expressed their opinion that they don't see this as a, at this particular time, a real critical issue that we have to go to this level of change when personal responsibility, both in terms of pedestrians, cyclists, and vehicle drivers, should be increased. I'd rather see us spend money on additional pedestrian crossings, additional enforcement of current rules for speeding, and, and dealing with cyclists that, you know, seem to not know what a stop sign is, or come off of a sidewalk into an intersection without even bothering to, to check their surroundings. This happens, you know, I think everyone has been witness to that. Some cyclists are very conscientious, and they do respect their position, both in terms of sidewalk usage and road usage, but the folks I've seen have been, well, they've taken their lives in their own hands, and, and I, I don't think that doing what this particular program might do, and I understand in our pre-council discussion that this is not a one-time grant, that we can revisit it and reapply for the grant at some point in the future, but I, I'd still like to try some other methods rather than reducing the capacity of the road to, to move traffic. I know there's an argument about the number of vehicles on the road as opposed to a few years ago, but I think with the levels of other venues into that area, vehicular traffic is still going to be a part, and I think Broadway as a four-lane does move those vehicular traffic, that vehicular traffic around very efficiently, and so I'm not going to support it, but it's not because I'm not against safety.
Other comments? Pam?
Yes, yes. Well, I'm, I'm very much in favor of this. I think it's the, I think it's a proactive move. It favors all of the development that we have going on downtown and makes it a lot easier for people to, for, for people to flow across Broadway. Back when Broadway was first developed in the sixties, you know, the number of cars that were estimated to be traveling that, that we would have on that road was overestimated. That traffic has never materialized, and that's why the StanTech study showed that, that we had excess capacity, that we have not as many cars on that road as would be justified today. So, of course, safety is, is one great reason, but I also want to see more of a flow between my residential district, the Winona State Community, and the people on the far side of Broadway and downtown. And, you know, it's intimidating to cross there now. I would, so I'm in favor of it, but I'd also like to see us extend, extend the paint job on the road down farther, so we can talk about that. But I'd like to see, if not down all the way to Mankato, but at least down to Franklin, so that we have people, we have, we have the narrowing starting further to the east.
George?
Like everyone here, I have received a lot of input for and against this project. I received all these communications through the most current communication system of texts, emails, voicemails, regular phone calls, in the pubs, in the restaurants, at the festivals, people would come up and give their thought for or against this project. I had an opportunity, I visited with five families on Broadway, I sat on their porch, and again, like I said, we focus on safety. And what's our biggest concern for safety? Speed. Broadway, as I said in our preliminary meeting, Broadway is a safe street. It's all of us here that make that street unsafe. It says thirty miles an hour, we go forty. It says thirty-five, we go forty-five. What I would like to see done is that if we could get a more tighter police surveillance out on Broadway, like, you know, two, three cars, and arrest the speeders, I hope I'm not one of them tonight or tomorrow. But anyway, look at raising the fines, whatever we can do, whatever avenue we have to do that. I was out in Pennsylvania. It's five hundred dollars on the turnpike. On some inside streets, it's three hundred dollars. Now, you get a ticket, yes, so be it, but when we get into your purse or into your wallet, we are going to remember that. We're going to go a lot slower. You know, we can shrink this road down to all we want, put all the lanes, all the paint, is it going to control the speeding? Speeding gets controlled one way by our police department. If we could get those fines heftier, write some tickets, that will begin to slow the traffic down on Broadway. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Any other comments or concerns? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Aye.
I believe that was four three. Motion carries.
And moving on, two items. Five point eight is the library grant application for the historic structure report, and I did distribute and it updated resolution this evening that had one additional paragraph.
Well, I would make a motion that the staff apply for the grant and adopt the attached resolution. Second, Beth.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? I would just say thank you to the staff for going after this historic structure report. I think it's a good tool to use going forward, so thank you for looking into it. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Well, let's start with George.
Okay, well, we're moving right along tonight, huh? Mankato Avenue Railroad Switching. I think we had a recipient of an award that could not make it tonight, so I hope we're continuing to look at ways to alleviate this traffic jam or train jam on Mankato Avenue. I had reports of it four times just last week, and it's thirty-five, forty minutes out of track. And then Mark Street, Sarnia Street, they then become racetracks. Everybody's hurrying because they want to get to the next location. And the thing is, the blockings that took place, it was Hamilton Street, Mankato, Louisa. You have to go up to Franklin in order to cross, and you got to Franklin, Franklin had such a traffic jam, because everybody's coming up there trying to get across, so let's continue to work to get some kind of a remedy on that, because, you know, things are going to happen, so. Also, I would just like to send out wishes of get well and good luck to Rita Trappel. She'll be going through some major medical turns here, and wish her well, and her family will be very, very strong in supporting her as she goes through her, through her hospitalization. And also condolences to the Leroy Ames family. Leroy, for many years, was one of the patrol officers on Mankato Avenue, wasn't in uniform, but he kept an eye on Mankato, so condolences to him and certainly a gentle man. Thank you.
Paul?
Well, I want to express my condolences to the family of Joe Morris. We all knew Joe, what Joe was, kind of experienced in the community. He was here in front of this council a number of times, frequently in front of the county board. He's certainly a champion of human rights, both civil and environmental, and he was just absolutely a steward of the land, and he worked tirelessly, willingly tirelessly in behalf of the people and the landscape of this community, so my, my condolences to the Morris family.
Thank you. Pam?
Yes, well, I, I too offer my condolences to the Morises and to, actually, all of us for losing Joe Morris. He, he did so much over so many years that it's a hard thing. On a different note, I'd like to invite everyone to a community tree planting this Saturday, October seventh, from ten in the morning till one P M. We can meet at Unity Park, that's right behind Winona Health Hospital. We're going to help plant new trees to replace the ash trees that are dying from infestations of Emerald Ash, Ash Bor. And the funds for these trees, here, I didn't know this, the funds from these trees came from the N F L. The National Football League Environmental Program gave us a grant for a Super Bowl Urban Forestry Grant to pay for the trees to, to replace the Emerald Ash trees. You don't need any special tools or skills. John Howard, the Sustainability Director, said the work would go on rain or shine, and if you want to help, you can, I'm sure, just show up, or you could call John Howard at the city for more information. See you there.
All right, thank you. Michelle?
I have two things. The first is, we need to come up with a plan for the medians downtown. I get a lot of input from people who've donated time and money to put those plantings in, and to see them weeded and full of garbage is disturbing, not to mention that the light pole either came down in a bad storm or was hit by a car, has been down for a couple of years now, on the third and Center Street parking lot, and now is being used as a garbage can. So, I would like it if we could replace that light fixture.
It's on order.
It, it's been like that for a while, and it's, you know, duct taped, but they kick it in and they put garbage in there. It's nice, but I, we need to come up with some way to, if Main Street programs can continue to donate hours and money to the plantings, we either need to not have plantings and use stone or some other type of structure in there, or we need to come up with a way to maintain them, and that would be great if we could do that. I don't know what to tell them when they talk to me, and I'm right there. The other thing I want to talk about is the drops. I think we need to come up with a short-term plan for what we might do to remove them from the facility if, A, they do not sell, or B, they do sell, but we need to remove the ten we're going to replace because we would like to move forward with the plan. My concern is if we don't have a plan in place, we're going to end up not being able to use the funds set aside to restore the facility, which will slow the whole process down. And I'm also thinking, just, I know most of us have probably met with Margaret Johnson, I also think we should just have a contingency in mind about what to do if we need to hang the drop somewhere for the longer term because fundraising stalls or we decide that some of the drops don't sell and we're not going to throw them away, so I think we need to have a plan in place, and I'm hoping staff can look at that and we can come up with an idea of what we're going to do in the event that either they don't sell, we don't sell, or we end up with more than we thought, because I, I know leaving them where they are is not going to work. Those are my two things.
Okay, Jerry?
I had a couple, but they were covered previously, so pass.
Okay, Al?
Looking forward to the cemetery walk, although my part is very miniscule compared to the hundreds of other volunteers for the event coming up, so kudos to them for their hard work and all the volunteers that make that wonderful event and a great success. I'm just going to be there on Wednesday morning with some middle school students in Potter's Field. And sympathy as well to the family of Joe Morris on his passing last week. On a bright note, I'd like to wish today my youngest On a bright note, I'd like to wish today my youngest grandson a very happy eighth birthday. Thank you.
Very good.
Under the consent agenda, there are four items. Approval of the minutes from September 18th, the final adoption of an ordinance for stop sign on Zumbro at Wabashaw, a claim by the city against Janice Dornfeld, and a claim against the city by Eric Weigel.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Second.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle, any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mayor, I move we adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adjourn.